Liz, why don't I turn things over to you? It looks like first item on the agenda is town meeting date, time, location discussion.
Sure, so this was to revisit the discussion from last week and get kind of a final confirmation if everybody is still satisfied with our town meeting date of June 17th, beginning at 7:00 PM to be held at the Dunnett School. There had been some discussion about considering different venues, even proposed outdoor venues. So either way, we just kind of need to get some closure on that so that we can move forward.
Okay, all right. And I should have said this before, but why don't we go around the horn and everyone that's on the call, introduce yourself. I'm Christine Joy.
John Trainor.
Liz Dennehy.
John Wilhampson.
Mark Russo, still.
Appreciate Martin.
Paul Carciety.
Hello.
Hi.
Okay, all right, sounds like that's it. Okay, all right, so we had, Liz, what do you think? We're just not sure with what the governor's order is going to look like. Do we really need to consider a different venue where, like the Upland Club that we had thrown out?
I don't know. Last week, I was kind of eager to consider picking a different venue because we are going to be in a predicament if we're unable to hold the meeting by June 30th. That said, though, I was thinking more about it, and I'm not certain that changing the location, or the date, or the time really makes a lot of sense. I'm wondering if we're better off going with Dunnett at the same everything that we've already established and just make provisions to have multiple meeting rooms within that building and kind of start working on our plan for that now so that we can maintain social distancing, we can require the face coverings for everybody. But that'll take quite a bit of work to figure out the spacing and all of that. So I'm wondering if our efforts are better spent working on that plan rather than worrying about alternate venues and rain dates and parking and things like that.
I think we all agree with that.
Okay, all right, so it's already on the warrant, so there's really no votes need to be taken, right, Liz?
No, no, it's just a discussion item in case you opted to change.
Okay, Mark, what do you think?
I think that's best, and the part I like best about that is we have to nail this down really, really well. If for no other reason than John and I are really old and therefore in the high-risk categories, but...
I beg your pardon.
All right, I'm really old. But no, I think our time is much better spent just nailing it down and protecting ourselves and our citizens. So I feel good about it, and I think also just making the decision and having made it, we move on, makes sense, too.
You know, when we did the park one, we had, I think that was the one, but I know we did one where, at that time Comcast was doing the cable, and we had it broadcast into the other room in the gym. And John, I think you've said there's even other rooms. So I think if we could get, you know, the cable people so that they can get the video and the audio to each of the different rooms that we select, then we're all set.
True.
And I think you have a fair amount of space between, I mean, even spacing people out, you know, like you've seen some of the graduations that they've done, you know, where there's a box for eating or a chair in one spot. You know, you also have some people that will come that are family, and you don't necessarily need to space them out, right? But between that and the gym, I mean, we had, and it wasn't uncomfortably full, we had 380 people there for the park in 2012.
Yeah.
As excited, I'm sure, as people will be to be able to go to a town meeting, I highly doubt we're going to have numbers even approaching what we would normally get just because of everything that's going on even in a month.
Might be their first night out, you never know.
Oh, I hope they could do better than that.
Yeah, I hope not, I hope not.
But, you know, we could also, I mean, I guess you could also, you, I mean, you have, you have classrooms, you have the library, the two big spaces, of course, the gym and the auditorium, you know. But I think just between those two, you should have enough for the potential of what I would expect to come.
Great. All right, so we're all set then with June 17th, 7:00 PM at the Dunnett. And then the election will be the following Saturday, the normal hours, I think, which are like, what, 8 to 8, something like that?
I believe it's 8 to 6.
8 to 6, okay. All right, perfect, all right, so check.
Do we know if the election officials are comfortable with that, that they're going to have to work that day?
I have not heard anything at all from Tricia in that regard, but I just made a note now to put her in touch with the Board of Health and things so that they make sure that they're planning for that election day and to conduct everything safely. So more on that to come.
I'm assuming you could move some of those barriers, too, and move them into the, right, if those, the barriers that you're putting up are movable, you could move and set it up so that it's...
Yes.
And that one equally, if not more so, we're going to have to pin down every detail and keep ourselves safe and keep our citizens safe.
Yes, there's a lot of planning that's going to need to happen over a little bit.
We just, we have to just be ironclad, pin down every detail.
All right, great. All right, so Town Properties Committee, adjust to five members. John?
You know, we had, a couple months ago, we had two members that resigned. And so, you know, we had talked at, I think, our last meeting, which seems like, it seems like a long time ago, that, you know, we were going to do some outreach and try and find some other folks. With everything that's going on right now, I think a better way to do this is for the short term, is to just bring the group down to five so that we don't have any quorum issues. And when we get to the, either to the other side of this, or to what is our new normal, and we kind of know what to do with that, that then we can look to find additional members and bring it back up. I would like to add folks to this committee, but I just don't think right now is the time to be recruiting and trying to spend energy on that with everything else we have going on. So I'm sort of asking for this for, as a temporary thing, because I do think it would be good to have additional blood.
I'm on the committee with John, and I support this. I think he's right on.
Okay, Mark, what do you think?
Yeah, no, that sounds right. I would just throw out there, situations have changed a little, and I don't know if the two people that left may feel a little different about the degree to which they've been supported. I wouldn't mind going to them with hat in hand and just exploring if they were interested in coming back.
I don't see a need for that, quite frankly, Mark.
Okay, I'll just leave it out there as I...
Maybe after this strangeness has died down, but we got, you know, we sort of got stopped in everything we were doing because of this. And I think the five people who are on it want to work, and I just think we should keep going, and then as things relax and we can get back to whatever the new normal is, maybe then it makes sense.
To approach them then, okay. All right, so it sounds like we're all in agreement, so I'll make a motion that we reduce the size of the Town Property Committee from seven to five members.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, all right. COVID-19 updates.
So we've been working very hard with our emergency management team to come up with whatever physical alterations may be in the townhouse to facilitate eventual safe reopening to the public. And as part of doing that, we actually coordinated Steve Sorrow with a local carpenter, and they are currently well underway converting some of the doors in the building to Dutch style doors so that you don't have people entering into the offices, they can conduct their business at the door. Likewise, for the offices that have countertops, the carpenter is in the process of constructing for us temporary plexiglass units that they'll stand, they'll take up the length of the counter, they'll be tall enough to provide a suitable barrier, and they will be off the countertop raised by about an inch or two, enough that you can pass papers back and forth underneath it. So that'll be for the offices with countertops. We're in the process of coordinating with Tom Millius and Kathy in that office, because they have kind of a unique setup there with two different entrances. And we're trying to figure out what makes the most sense. We could either reserve the front entrance, that's a dedicated entrance to that office, we could reserve that for employees only and have everybody go to the interior of the building and conduct their business at the Dutch style door that's already in place, or we could do somewhat of an opposite arrangement and have that interior doorway be for employees only and have everybody conducting business with them to come by the front of the building and go into that dedicated entrance. And there is somewhat of a waiting area set up there anyway with a small window, so we're kind of weighing that out. Part of what will factor into that is that we're going to convert the main meeting room into a waiting area of sorts that will allow for social distancing. The fire department has some very part-time people that are looking to gain a little experience, and so they'll staff it with one of them. And essentially, when people come into the building, they are considering doing temperature checks, that kind of up in the air, so we're waiting to see what some of the other cities and towns are going to be doing in that regard as far as screaming everybody. If we do that, it would pertain to employees as well. So anything that we do or we implement that would affect the public, the employees will all be held to the same standard. So similar to the face coverings, everyone will be required to wear their face covering within six feet of anybody communicating with the public. So same thing if we do opt to do the temperature screenings. But that said, we're already well underway setting it up so that, you know, you would enter there, you would say what business you needed to conduct, and then we're going to have a little paging system where the person from the fire department would say, "Okay, you know, you have somebody for the treasurer's office that's coming down." And they'll send them down just to make sure that for some of the higher traffic offices, like the tax collector's office, for example, that we don't end up with six people in there all jammed in there waiting at the counter. And we also wanted to alleviate a bunch of people needing to stand around in the hallway. So we feel like this is kind of a good system that should, should work. We don't anticipate reopening the Council on Aging office for the foreseeable future. We're waiting for the governor's announcements on that. So in the interim, we had to make some adjustments in our financial offices to make it a safe environment for them and where it is a higher traffic area in terms of customers. So temporarily, we're going to relocate the town accountant into the Council on Aging office, and we're going to move the treasurer collector into the town accountant's office space just to facilitate some separation, but so that the bulk of customers coming there, they're not coming to see the town accountant, they're coming to see the treasurer collector or her assistant. So it'll just be the two of them in that office space. They also have two separate entrances for that office, so we'll have one for the public to go in and out, and then one for the employees to go in and out. So we're looking at doing all of that, and we're waiting to get a plan from the library that talks about any physical alterations that that building may require. And similar to that, we're also, we have Rob Furlot working with Steve Sorrow and the carpenter just to iron out sticker sales and to make sure that that can all happen at the highway office. Rob had a good idea, he talked about getting like a portable cart that they would sell the stickers from, so they're working that out down there. I just don't want to miss anything, it's been a busy few days with this. So one of the things, actually, it came up on an earlier call that John and I had, is the idea of remote participation. We are considering that once the state of emergency is lifted, we're assuming that the relaxation of the open meeting law requirements will either be lifted with that, or they'll ask for it to stay in place but may modify it somewhat. But in any event, we think it would be a smart idea if in advance of all of that, if we get some clarification from town council and find out if maybe the Board of Selectmen or if individual boards need to take a vote to facilitate remote participation. And what that would mean would be maybe for some meetings, you would only need a quorum of the board to be present at the physical meeting location, and then maybe the other members could participate remotely, or town staff could participate remotely, or even the public. Because even once things go back to normal, we don't want to make it so the public can't participate, because maybe they're afraid to come out and attend a public meeting in a, in a space with a bunch of other people. So it would be nice if we could still continue the remote participation, even at a small scale, once all of this is kind of lifted, just in case some people are still, you know, if they feel it's unsafe to come out, just to give them another option to participate in the meeting. So that's something that we're looking at. I intend to get more information from town council on that as far as what's required in the way of votes, and I'll present that back to you and see what we want to do with it. But I think it would be good for something like that if we could implement it sooner rather than later, so that if the guidance that's currently in place about the virtual meetings is removed and no longer in effect, that we still have some options available to us so everyone can safely participate in our meetings.
That sounds really good to me. In the past, the problem, if it is a problem, had been that it had to be available to all boards and commissions and committees. Now, maybe it's going to be different post the crisis we've had, but that makes sense, and it particularly makes sense to give people options, maybe give high-risk individuals other options, but still leave someone on site, which I think is an important piece as well. So I hope that moves ahead, that'd be great.
Yeah, I agree, sounds good.
Yeah, the remote participation, I think, is going to be a big part of the new normal. I think that's the way, I'd be very surprised if they don't allow that, and I think we should push for it, and maybe we should just check in with our, you know, our state rep and senator just to make sure.
I think that's a good idea to check in with them, too. Both Senator Brady and Representative Lonatra have been very helpful to us, they've been very present, and they're responding to any questions we have. They respond to stuff sometimes multiple times a day, so they're very much engaged during this, so I think that's something that we should remind them of, that we, even once things are relaxed, that they consider leaving some semblance of that in place, but at least if they didn't, if we take whatever steps we need to take on the local level to facilitate it, it would just make a big difference. I mean, during a basic selectman's meeting, there are five of us normally that are all up there at that table, and then if you say, "Oh, well, we'll space the five of us all around the room," well, then if you have to wave to get people's attention to speak, it becomes like, wouldn't it just be more efficient if maybe three of the five people were available on Zoom, or something of that nature?
One of the things I'm a little concerned about, though, is the Council on Aging. What is your, is Joy going to share the office with the town accountant?
She will, yes, but...
Okay.
It's not to bring the most high-risk people, like, back. We're actually going to move Barbara's entire setup.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that...
She's not going to take over like Joy's computer, and I did talk to Joy about it, and she was fine with it.
Yeah, no, I'm more concerned around, you know, a lot of these seniors either don't have or won't use the latest technology.
Right.
And how we can engage with them, because I think some of the things Joy did received, you know, like the veterans' luncheons, things where she had, things, events going on for seniors were well-received.
Right.
And I'd hate to see that just stop completely. I haven't got an idea how we work to go forward, but I think there needs to be some thought there. I'd be glad to help out with any of that.
I agree, and that would be great if you want to kind of help out with that and maybe brainstorm with Joy. I'm hoping that there's more guidance released from the state later this week or early next week that helps us categorize some of these classes or groups. Say, for instance, COA in the library, in my mind, those would come at a later phase, and I don't know what the state has in mind. They, for all we know, they could be thinking of the library and COA as a Phase 4, meaning like shouldn't be reinstituted until there's a vaccine, or they could consider that a Phase 2 or a late Phase 1, you know, so it's... But I have to say, though, Joy has been very good with the COA about still delivering essential services, so that's one plus. Although I do think people, like you said, John, are missing very much that social component, but at least...
There may be an opportunity with the library and the Council on Aging.
Right.
And maybe we could kind of at least get them to brainstorm a little together, because they both face the same problem.
Right, that would be a good idea, too.
And I know that there is, you know, a hesitancy with technology, but I think we should poke at that a little bit, and whether that's even some, you know, courses to teach. I mean, like, you know, we had our first, you know, a few weeks ago, we did our first Zoom call with my parents, right? They had never used it before.
Yep.
And, you know, and then we did it again for Mother's Day, and now she's using it for some of the stuff that she volunteers on for scholarships and things like that. So, you know, it's because, yeah, that component is missing, but it's also that one of the most dangerous things to do is to bring this group of people all together in the same...
I agree.
And so if you could fulfill that, at least with some of the folks, in this type of environment like we are on here, you know, at least to give something, you know, so I know it's hard to do, and some people just don't even have the technology to fully avail themselves of it, but, you know, you can do Zoom on a phone, you know, a smartphone, you can do it on a tablet, you can do it on a computer. And so I just think that's maybe a place where at least connecting some of the people, and then maybe if some of them connect that way, maybe others will decide that they should try it, too.
Yeah, if we could get a few disciples to go out and, you know, like Doc Cushman and a couple of others that, you know, that's on Facebook swearing all the time.
I agree with all that, and, but I also, I think we have to lead the charge in being conservative, particularly for seniors, in not encouraging them toward risky behavior, and even at the risk of irritating them or isolating them. They shouldn't be spending a lot of time close together right now, and I don't think that's going to change in the summer.
All right, so we'll keep this on our radar and try to find creative ways to engage the seniors and possibly find a way that they, we can help them with technology. Okay, so Liz, thank you for the COVID-19 update. John, do you have anything for the school?
Just, we're just relooking at budgets. You know, I know both Silver Lake had a meeting last night and another one tonight, and we'll continue to do that on that front, and then we're also doing it from a Dunnett perspective. We did provide FinCon for their meeting tonight, it's an adjusted budget reflecting some of the things that we moved to the special town meeting as well as the adjustments to the bus contract. But we're going to have to, we'll spend some time over the next few weeks also looking for other places where we might trim a little bit. I mean, these are incremental cost cuts because there just isn't much, there isn't much fat in that budget, and there hasn't been for years, so... But, you know, we may be able to tweak a little bit from vocational, because unlike normal, you know, you, you've got the, the budget is done before you get the final submissions for, for applications for the VOTE program. So usually you have to leave a little buffer there, but that was May 1st now, so when we can still make adjustments to the budget, and now we know how many people are going, so we can do that. So we're going to look for any places where we can to try and be as lean as we can going, you know, for, for the next year. But I think it's going to be hard for FinCon to look at the two budgets without looking at them together.
Okay, great, thank you, John. All right, so next on our agendas, we've got the minutes from 4:30 and 5:06, so I took a look at those. John and Mark, did you guys have a chance to read the minutes?
I did.
All right, do you have any, anything that needs to be changed, or did you feel like we were, we were good to go on both of those?
I'm okay with April 30. I do, I do have some changes on the 6.
Okay, what about you, Mark?
I'm fine, I'm fine so far.
Okay, all right, so I'll make a motion that we accept the April 30th minutes as submitted.
A second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all right, John, the 5, 6 minutes, what do you have?
Okay, so when we do the introduction to the minutes, we're repeating who are there, the people, I think we just need to say at one time, so that would eliminate a paragraph roughly, okay? At the same time, we've got a lot, one of the things I want to see happen with these is that they go up on not only the town website, but the Facebook page. And we've got minutes now that are written that are very, I think, very human-engineered, if you will, but they're full of acronyms. And I think three or four years ago, we said, you know, when we did acronyms, we'd always say what the first one is. So like, we've got Board of Selectmen, BOS, and then we just use BOS throughout, that's fire. But we've got FEMA, we've got MEMA, I doubt townspeople would know what those are. We've got ATM, some people might know that's Annual Town Meeting, but I'm not sure everybody would. I think some places we've got, we've got COLA now. COLA is Cost of Living Allowance, but again, I'm not sure everybody, and I just think we ought to go back to the first time you use the acronym, spell it out, and then use the initials thereafter. And that's where most of my things, the changes, there's one sentence on After Ring Road where it says, "Minutes will be held for the 5/13/20 agenda." And I'm not sure what that meant, the minutes of April 30th will be held?
Yes, that's what it meant.
Okay, so I think we ought to just say April 30th, so it's clear what we're doing there.
And separate it from that paragraph, because it's not really part of the Ring Road discussion.
Yeah, I think it was separated, but it, yeah. And we could even move it down to the end with the minutes. Other than that, I'm fine.
Move that down, John?
Excuse me?
Move that down?
I think...
And then clarify the 4:30 minute?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right, so John...
I like them, I think they're well done.
Thank you.
All right, so do you want to make a motion that will accept the minutes with your amendments, and you'll work it out with Bree?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Okay, I'll second the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, so we're current with minutes. All right. Did our guest have something that you wanted to say?
Yes, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. My name is Paul Carciety, I live at 28 Forest Street, been here seven years or so. Been here seven years or so. And a problem has developed in the past week or 10 days. The people, a person who lives at 32 Forest Street has created a retail store at her property. And I heard you talking, Facebook, and it's under the name Hippie Pilgrim, H-I-P-P-Y-P-I-L-G-R-I-M. It is, they, they built, over a course of three days, they built a pretty substantial retail store. It's got a metal roof, it's got barn doors that close, she sells anything from spices, garlic, salt, chocolate, alcoholic beverage, prepared mixers, numerous things. And it's a open, seven days a week, 10 to 6. There's a big sign at the bottom, it's probably two feet by seven feet. There's a big sign across the top with some of their offerings and time and stuff like this. And I know that Forest is a residentially zoned area. And I, I don't, I went up to town hall and then on Mother's Day, they brought in heavy equipment and a crew of two and they removed part of their front lawn and made a parking lot for three cars. And, you know, and made, of course, they worked all day and made a racket. And I went over and spoke to the, the crewman and I got a lot of viciousness and aggression thrown in my face and I was told to get the hell out of this, none of my business. And I don't know of any application for a variance or anything, but I don't, I do know that Forest is a, a nice, quiet residential street. And now there's this garish retail store right next door to me and I'm not too happy about it. And I did go up to town hall Monday morning. I know, I found it was locked, but a woman came out and told me that I should send a letter to John Millius.
Oh.
Oh, yes, and at the address of buildingadmin@plimptontown.org, which I did-
That's correct.
And haven't heard anything back, but I'm just really concerned, you know, this is in my reading of the bylaw, a violation of the bylaw. It's, I'm not happy with it. It's a residential street and, you know, my neighbors and I try to keep our street nice. And this is, and I know this person, according to what I read on the Hippie Pilgrim Facebook page, sells these concoctions and spices in local stores and at farmers markets. You can, you know, read her Facebook page yourself and, and if you'd like, and see what she does. I just feel despite the fact of what we're all living under, you know, with the COVID, that's not a valid excuse to violate the zoning bylaw and to, you know, create this monstrosity and this, this, you know, improper and contraption on our street. You know, it's, it's not right and I, I just don't want it to go on any longer. And if, you know, you could take a look at it and give me direction as to who I should speak to or, or what, I'd be happy to do so, but it's, it's really bothersome. I know this person, I only know her as Susan, according to that Facebook page.
Okay.
She's been there about three years.
Okay, Paul, why don't we have you get ahold of Liz offline and she'll get your contact information and we can get Tom to get ahold of you to-
Okay, that'd be great.
But yeah, thank you.
You can email me or even better yet, if you already emailed Building Admin, I'll just give them a call later tonight and ask them, please follow up with you first thing tomorrow.
Oh, that'd be great. And I'll give you my cell phone number. Feel free to, you know, give it to whomever you think. It's 617-
As if you want it on your cell phone on recorded meeting.
Never mind, no.
Okay.
Is there a means to get in touch with you in the email that you sent?
Yes, my, my email address is there.
Okay, I'll make sure that they follow up with you by email first thing tomorrow.
That's very kind of you, I appreciate it.
Great, okay, well, thank you for coming on.
All right, thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Very good. Okay, so now being, we have no further business. John or Mark or John Williamson, do you have anything further?
I, just one thing while we're, I saw that the, I don't know, somebody, I saw that the lieutenant governor is saying that the community compact program is still in place and looking for people to submit things that they want to keep it going. And I know you've got a lot going on, Liz, I'm just wondering if there's anything we could involve Colleen in there. Colleen Thompson.
Yeah, maybe. I was going to reach out to her anyway. It seemed like she was just starting to pick up steam. We had talked about joining that data network. And then all this happened and then nothing really happened. So I was going to follow up with her anyway. So if you want to forward that along, maybe that's something that we could, her involved with.
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, the thing that the Department of Revenue sends out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just forward that over to you if you want.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, very good. All right. Being that we've got no further business, I'll make a motion that we adjourn and our next meeting will be, is it Monday at 6:00?
Monday at 5:30.
Monday at 5:30, okay, so we'll meet again Monday at 5:30. All right, so motion to adjourn?
I just have a question.
Okay, go ahead, Mark.
The meeting Monday, we'll be voting on the warrant articles, is that?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
And Liz got us the, the final draft of the annual and special town meeting warrants today.
Yes, and I'll get you the final version of the budget tomorrow.
Beautiful, okay.
The draft.
All right.
Liz, would you include me on the draft?
Sure.
The one, thank you.
All right.
And sorry, just, just back to the meeting Monday, is that the one where we would be inviting the town moderator or is that going to be a meeting further down the way?
No, that'll be further down. We'll invite the moderator, the town clerk and the town accountant and go over all the motions.
Yeah.
This is simply just to vote the recommendations so that you, we can figure out signing it. I'll probably have you each sign one at a time and send it back to me, scan it back. And if anybody has a problem, I can help you with that. But this is just so Nate can get it off to the printer and, and all of that.
Okay, are you good, Mark?
Good.
Okay, all right, motion to adjourn. Do you have a second?
So moved.
All right, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Good night, everyone. Have a good weekend.